Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yep.
Any discussion, any changes? I'm with your group of minutes of the last one. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Tom? Ken? Margaret? Hi, Paul?
Hi.
And I vote aye, so it's four to one extension. Treasures report, Mr. Treasurer?
Right. You requested, Chair, a summary of what's happened up to this point with our accounts. Our planning board expenses are at thirty-six twenty-nine balance right now. Our planning board filing fees, we've taken in seventeen-hundred-and-sixty, so we're at negative thirty-two forty. Regional planning is almost zero, it's eighty-eight cents. And our salary and wages with seventy-nine seventy-six six.
Do we have any expenses that are coming up? Before the end of the? We have our stipends, right?
So you're gonna spend them on this year?
Hey, I'm the chair, I get another two hundred and fifty bucks.
You can buy a lot more stuff.
I know.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Okay, and the next thing on the agenda is the planus report?
Yeah, keep it brief, the, I never heard back from that attorney I was talking with about that odd scenario out on Stoddard Street, the discontinuance of that road and the, like I said, the, let's call it, as like jetting out of the road into a property, but, but it just exists, that's right of way, it's not paved road, obviously. So I never heard back from them, so I assume they're not interested in pursuing it, but in the meantime, I did confirm with town council that the appropriate way to pursue or proceed with something like that is to do a formal discontinuance of the public road. That, that is the issue, and so should that ever come back again, that'll be messy and fun, trying to figure out who owns what after that public road, where, or portion of where it's ever been discontinued. So you're talking about things that were established two-hundred years ago, maybe, so. But anyway, it's a topic for another day, so we'll see if they, they ever come back and ever want to pursue that. The expression of interests document is out on Holy Angels, and so, and we had a site visit into Holy Angels with, last Tuesday, I believe it was. A couple of people showed up for that, I was surprised, a couple of folks I knew would be there from the community. Couple of folks from the, it sounded like were newly Uptonians that showed up to that, that had some sort of interest in it. And then I had two architects from like Malden area show up, wasn't aware of, no, I certainly didn't reach out to them, so they must have came aware of it themselves, which is great, so it's, it's, it's reaching people, which is wonderful, and so I know Joe and I, I myself, and I know Joe is, you know, still actively, you know, trying to network with developers and people who might be interested in engaging a project like that, but still open, so that's why we're continuing to reach out and see what, see what we get on it, that's, that's where we are with that. I'm still working on the RFP for the concept, the preliminary design concepts for pre-permitting issues relative to Holy Angels, so would be looking to engage an engineering firm to, you know, create possible build-out scenarios, or anything that happen on that parcel, so we can get a handle on what permitting processes might be required for certain types of development, so I'm working on that. The, I was waiting to hear back from town council, I'd sent off an RFP for the lease of the esteemed building on the first floor, if you remember last town, town meeting, the town authorized leasing out that, that portion of the building, so I'm just looking to get that information back from town council, and then we can go live for advertising that to, to folks who would be interested in setting up a retail shop of some kind out of the old library space. Obviously, we have some people in mind that we think are interested. For a B is on, is ongoing, excuse me, is I? For to be ongoing, they, the developer has committed to providing revised plans, reducing by a story and reducing eight units. I've yet to receive that, there, I talked to the Alpin today, and he's, yeah, it's representative, and he's just working with his engineers to address some other small concerns from, well, not small concerns, I mean, small relative to the design, but, um, concerns of the butters. So they're, they're trying to incorporate that into their sign before they actually submit, so that's why I don't have plans yet on that, and I know folks have been eager to see those designs submitted, so I'm sure we'll have a robust discussion on that at the April meeting.
Question, yes? Um, the, was it the normal steam, does that require any other, we put the ramp there, does that require any handicap? Access to get to the top floor, just to rent that?
We're not gonna rent the top floor, it's just gonna be the bottom floor with, obviously, has the ADA access to it. But yeah, that would definitely be a concern, what we can do that. Later on the agenda is about make flowers for next, here, how's it?
Any questions for the planner and any discussion? If I move on from the agenda, I am going to accuse myself from the first agenda item, which is approval of not required plans of fifty-nine to gaming street. So we're moving on to fifteen-hundred and three, we haven't run it a few.
Yeah, Johnsonville, I work with Eli Paterzo, we did this eight-hour plan, so this is the piece of land on McCann Street in Fowler that is owned by Cynthia and John Robertson, it's thirty-eight, six acres, I made glasses. A couple of years ago, almost the entire property was put into a conservation restriction, except for this area where we've created and broken out a lot around the existing old house and barn. So we, we're just breaking out one conforming lot from the thirty-eight acre piece, and that's it, everything needs zoning. That's it, my lot, and I needed one more print, so I.
Yeah, just to elaborate for a second, under the, you know, can brush me about Ron, but under the conservation restriction, we're out to lots, zero warrants, three, and because of the way the whole thing was presented or constructed, the entire property would have to be sold as a month's, so the house could not be severed from zero warrant and fifty-nine, so this provides a mechanism for, you know, to be able to, you know, treat that, the, the land with the house and the barn as a separate parcel.
Zero warrant is this corner piece, that lower part?
Zero warrant is, I don't have the plan in front of me, I don't think it's on this map, it's a separate parcel. It's about ten acres or so, or one, one and ten acres, front Warren Street, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, Warren Street.
By the gas line.
So that's not on this map, but the, you know, one of the interesting.
Oh, where the, the trailer? It's all under the same. They may be considered separate parcels, but they're all under the same ownership, so as far as surveyors are concerned, it's all one parcel.
Yes, and they're on one conservation restriction.
So that will then, it'll now just be a parcel like this?
Yes. And, and, yes.
Right, it's, it's kinda small, but you can see it on the locust.
Should we go through what you need to have? Give us, get your locust, get your space, get your table, get your access. You don't have your straight line measurements for your frontage, but it's supposed to be a hundred and eighty, and you've got a hundred and sixty-five, plus a hundred and fifty, you got plenty.
Right, I remember that now.
Plenty, but supposed to be point-to-point, just in case it goes around the corner.
Yeah, and you're, you're proposing a change, aren't you, for, for a straight line frontage along a curve or something to that effect?
Yeah, eighty, eighty percent, if you're not to go down to the gas station, if you can go out of town towards Milford, was it the gas station on left, what's that, which one's that?
From.
Gasco.
Yeah, area, oh, towards Milford.
But, Gasco.
Gasco, yeah, you see where it turns, turns to the left, it turns to the left of the street, that would should be considered frontage, because it's a hundred and twenty degrees, less than a hundred and twenty degree angle, so that would actually be your frontage, and.
Okay.
So this is some interesting fine tuning, because we have some issues with how we exactly measure frontage, so.
Why can't you just keep the frontage along the curve, what, what's the problem with that?
Because a curve like this may be way too narrow, although, although.
So you can, if you propose a cul-de-sac, you're only gonna be able to have one block at the end of cul-de-sac.
Two, because you get seventy percent around the curve, that's the other one, right, you don't get one for one, you get seventy percent.
I see.
So that's allowed you to put two at the end of the cul-de-sac. I know, who knows? So other than that, everything's fine, and you've got plenty of frontage.
Yeah. Long area.
Yeah, and this is the remaining land that you're talking about, because this is your stone wall.
I have no problems with that.
Acting chair.
Anyone?
Straight forward. Do you have a magic pen?
We have actually a question in the audience, yes.
To the acting chair.
I'm the acting chair.
Cal James Arvage Junior. Presently, who is the owner of the parcel of land to boxy the bump? Or may I clear for man?
Cynthia and John Roberts.
Yes.
Talking to the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Robertson's.
It's nothing under the conservation property.
That's with the chair, under the conservation restriction, the Robertson's paying taxes on that property, on the, on the, so it was owned by them, and they pay taxes.
And so says their plan. So many to.
I'm really happy here, love is thirty seconds. Back at Cynthia. One more, ready?
Did you?
I don't know, do you? I'm not saying, don't sign. If you want me to have Margaret's, I'm using. Yes.
Is it twenty-five?
Six? Twenty-five? Twenty-six? Oh, sorry, it's twenty-six, yeah. Thank you.
Grace, did we get a, the filing fee on this?
Yes, yes, they did, I brought it, picked up my mom tonight and brought it in.
And that's all?
God, we trust, all others pay cash.
Thank you. And every team we ask you for.
The sign, you know? Okay, you can make copies of that.
The chair is yours, oh, thank you. Don, you want your model?
He can make copies of that.
Oh, you want me to take mine? If, yeah, we don't keep the model, no, I know, I, I have to take it, right?
That's right.
If you want, I'll take it, it's probably matter if you just can't.
Okay.
And if you. We do need one unsigned, though. We got two signed, one unsigned, we only have two.
Yeah, I have one unsigned. Yeah, paper court or something that I.
I thought I just got.
So the next item on the agenda is major site plan modification filed by the town of the Recreation Division. Kwanzaa parking lot is being forward, but we may need to sign the decision document.
Percy. Cindy. Did everybody get a chance to look at the, the?
Did you write that? You should be a lawyer, Paul, you're getting really good. She's learned from the best. Did anyone have any questions about what's recent? Yeah. Paul, did you have anything?
No, I did not.
Well, that's it for me, then, so we just sign it?
Yeah.
Not getting attention. Do we have a public hearing scheduled for resilient?
Yeah.
The next on the agenda is public meeting, one sixteen South Street, Limerick subdivision applicant, or else construction, continued from March twelve, so do you wanna hit off Mike?
I'll hand it off to either Rick or Sean, we, the board received the revised plans, I forget, yesterday, I think it was that came in. So Sean, if you wanna take the board, or Rick, if you wanna take the board through your latest designs, there was, as discussed, I saw a paper road extending into the proposed, what will eventually become, I'm sure, solar fields, to address frontage issues, concerns, so, but that was, I think that was the largest change.
So we look at, Rick, do you want me to take it from here?
March twenty-one plan?
Yeah, go right ahead, good evening, everybody.
All right, good evening, Sean Malone, Oak Consulting Group, the engineer for Rick Morell and the, the project. So, yeah, Michael, as Michael alluded to, there was, there was a few kind of bigger items that I think we need to tackle to move this forward, identified by DGT's peer review. The three major ones, I think, were the buildable area calculation, the lot five and extension of a right-of-way into that, as, as Michael had mentioned, and the cul-de-sac length. So we did go through and revise the plans, hopefully to address all of those concerns, and with my submission, I submitted a letter, as the board suggested, with kind of the justification of why we're proposing what we're, what we're proposing, and if I may, I'll share my screen and kind of walk you through that. Okay, so first, first issue, the buildable area, and DGT had suggested that we prepare a plan showing all the areas excluded from the buildable area calculation. There's a lot of stuff going on here, we have wetlands, we have FEMA floodplain, which we've added to the plan here in Cyan, we have the Army Corps flowage easement, which is close to the hundred-year floodplain, but there's a little, some little differences. We have some slopes greater than twenty percent, so rather than create a table to try to exclude those, I created this plan, which showed the area which is buildable for each lot. And what we're proposing, and the basis of what we're proposing is, we're in the agricultural district, so eighty thousand square foot minimum, the regulations require fifty percent of that area to be buildable land, so forty thousand square feet. So we've designed these lots to have forty thousand square feet of contiguous buildable area, so that's all these areas in purple here. So lot one over here, we have about fifty-three thousand, lot two, forty thousand and some change, lot three, forty thousand, some change, and lot four, sixty-six thousand. In the subdivision rules and regs, you are allowed discretion as to what areas you want excluded from buildable areas. The, the term in the regulation is, in computing any areas for any purpose, the planning board may exclude paved areas or any land that is not buildable or otherwise unusable. So we could create these lots to be eighty thousand square feet and have forty thousand square foot at least buildable area, but in doing that, we'd end up having to cut off a lot of this area in the back, these wetlands, and just create these non-buildable lots that'll just, you know, get lost in time, nobody's gonna really care for it, and they really aren't anything, so we thought a better option would be to take that unusable land and just attach it to one of the lots that has at least the forty thousand square feet of buildable area, just so there's some ownership and responsibility for that land. If you want, I can keep going through all the other things, or we can talk about these things one at a time?
By me?
Yes.
Now, when you read that subdivision rule that says that the lot, like eighty thousand square feet, that forty, forty thousand has to be a buildable, if the lot was two hundred thousand, that doesn't mean you have to put a hundred thousand, it's not half of the lot, it's still only forty thousand square feet of buildable land per house lot. So if you've got forty square feet of buildable land per house lot, I think it ends there with the size of your lot. Now, as far as the extra land, the, what, what is the, why is it not being used or not buildable? I'm not so sure, that's, that's a, a big question for the planning board, it may, may go into the conservation, and it may go into other areas, but dimensionally, you need forty thousand square feet of usable land per lot in an eighty thousand square foot zone.
And it appears you have that, correct?
That's correct, yes, and, and, you know, I absolutely accept the members' interpretation, I think it could also be interpreted some other way, but there are, there is language in the, the rules that allow you that discretion, so I just wanted to present that to you.
Language, give me that other language, I'd like to get the other side of it.
Um, I, I don't have it, well, I do have it, I believe it said, okay, I have it here. In no event shall the area of an individual law within a subdivision be less than fifty percent buildable.
Of the required lot size.
That, it, it doesn't have that in it, I, I agree with you, that's the intent, so that's, I just wanted to clarify.
So if you've got a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot lot, we're gonna make you set aside two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet to build on it? No, it's the lot size, it's the, it's the fifty percent of the lot size.
And, and, and we, we accept that.
Yes, I was gonna say, let's go with Tom's interpretation, I.
Yeah. In one of the other comments from DGT, they asked us also to confirm the frontage area calc, so on this plan, I have in green the, the lines that we use for the frontage, so we use the cord length on curves, the straight line, cord length on curves, and then seventy percent of the length on a cul-de-sac, so all of the lots have at least two-hundred-and-forty feet of frontage with that calculation, that the actual frontage would be greater than that, but per that requirement and calculation method, we have at least two-hundred-and-forty feet on all lots. Moving forward, the alignment, there was a comment about the straight line length. We were less than a hundred and fifty feet in this section, a hundred and fifty feet's required in between curves, we're, we've revised this to have that hundred and fifty feet, so we meet that in full. The dead-end streets, we're allowed, with the planning board's permission, up to seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of cul-de-sac length. Our previous design measured that to the center of the cul-de-sac, we have since revised that to measure to the back of curb, I think as was suggested by DGT, so that we, we believe is in full compliance now. We've added a sidewalk on one side of the site, this was in DGT comments, as well as our initial meeting with the planning board, I believe that came up, we, we were originally requesting a waiver for it, and I believe the board suggested that they still want to have a sidewalk on one side, so we've added that. And then the last thing, as Michael had mentioned, previously, we just had a fifty-foot right-of-way accessing this back lot, it would, so we've gone ahead and revised this to be seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot cul-de-sac right-of-way, this would be an unimproved street, essentially a paper street, but that would give the appropriate amount of frontage for this zone, for this lot five, where the solar farm would be proposed. And then the last little thing that we did, too, is there was a comment about the detention base and retention base and being within the flood zone, so we've removed that from that area, too, and so this easement is incorporated into the buildable area calculation that I've shown you. So that, that summarizes the changes, and happy to go through any or all of those with the board, any questions?
I do have one question on, on the, the road, generally, our, our access to an undeveloped property is off the end of the cul-de-sac. You, you have it coming right out of the side of the road. I have a question, is that a, a Mr. Planner, is that something that you could help me on? Do our rules say it comes out of the cul-de-sac, or can they put it anywhere?
Oh, that's a good question, I don't know if, I'll, I'll look, I'll, I'll see if there's specific language that would control for access off of cul-de-sacs, but I'll defer to the, to Sean on this, because I believe the reason why they're showing it that way is because there's the existing cart path that's existing as the access, but I understand you're.
But for our planning, it's, it's, if, if you're going to develop the undeveloped property, you would extend the roadway, and you would go through the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac would go away, and it was another subdivision or another, whatever, but you would still access the undeveloped property through the roadway, through the end of the cul-de-sac.
I, I would just add, I, I think that would apply primarily if you were to connect to another street, because you really can't extend this cul-de-sac any further, it's at the seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot limit.
You called it a paper street, and that, that bothers, you called it a paper street, and it's coming right off the side of that on the, the curve that you just adjusted to a hundred and fifty feet, it doesn't look like a safe, safe design to me. Could be wrong, but I'd like, I have more questions on how that access road should be designed.
I, I guess that's, that was my question, too, I just didn't know if, if that angle was, I know it's a low-use road, we're not talking about a high-speed curve there, but is that a, i- if that road were to be built, would it be a safe road just coming off that, it, it looks like it might be, the way, the way, you know, if you're coming in from the, from South Street, it looks like an easy, you know, you just go straight ahead, so I guess it's more how two cars coming out of those two cul-de-sacs would interact.
Yeah, and I understand the question, and again, this, this is where the existing road is, so as Michael was saying, that this is kind of a little bit of a driver of where this is, but when you're talking about safety, we talk about sightlines, so if a car's coming out here, they have, you know, a clear, clear sightline up the road this way, and then a clear sightline going down the road this way, I, I don't think there's any traffic safety issues with this whatsoever.
I would say it's not only where the current cart path is, but it also does include a pre-built stream crossing, there's, there's a big cove there for that stream crossings.
Right.
But elsewhere.
So I, is this gonna be the primary access to the inner lot, or is this just going to be, again, an easement in case another access is needed? inner lot, or is this just going to be, again, an easement in case another access is needed?
No, thi- this will be the access to the the solar farm.
Okay.
So it's not really a paper street. It it's it's gonna be, that is gonna be the access, and it's just, you're not gonna have it paved.
Yeah, it's just gonna remain as it is. Yeah.
And the other question I have, is that going to reduce the buildable area of the houses next to it?
No, no, because that that was all incorporated into our buildable area calculation and the lot size. So any of that area was never counted towards those a bit adjacent lots.
Right, because it's it's not in the purple, right? So I you you if we go to that purple map, that that
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not in the purple.
Yeah.
Maybe some maybe we'd use, if that's the driveway entrance because of the conservation reason, because of the layout of the land, that's the just best way to go. Maybe there's signage, maybe that you'd put some sort of a yield on one of them so that you'd sign it and uh so maybe maybe anybody coming in from the from the solar farm.
And and I would anticipate, Rick, maybe you can confirm this, but the the driveway to the solar farm will most likely be gated.
Correct. It will be. So there's gonna be very limited access down there. Excuse me. We have um plenty of details to go through with probably, you know, conservation, but um that is the plan and have that gated.
Think uh through the board. Um, obviously, I I was just got these designs yesterday. Perhaps for definitive plan, uh well, not perhaps, definitely for different uh, you know, fire will will want to weigh in on that access road. You know, hundred percent. So um, the board will definitely have an opportunity to address all these issues and more, that's the plan. I just wanted to flag that as a as an issue going forward.
Lots of water now. But the request before us tonight is preliminary subdivision. Yeah.
I I don't have a a problem with it. I guess that that's a good point by Mike. We, you know, we want we want uh fire safety to weigh in on it. Um, but I think my guess is that it's okay. But
The stream crossing as you go out on out towards the um towards the field, the solar field is a pretty good sized stream, so there's there's a lot of water.
Yes.
From it's coming out of um comes out of uh Taff Pond.
Does Concon have anything they want to add to it, or?
Well, uh yes, Mike Panko, uh vice chair of the Concon Commission, um have a draft letter. Sure if you folks have seen that. I'm not sure if the applicants have seen. Have they seen it?
I don't think so.
Okay. We have not. No, I don't believe.
Well, Concon meets tomorrow night. Or we we vote, we will vote on whether or not to submit that our that letter to the planning board. There's a couple of mysterious points, but a couple of bigger points. Uh, one would be, uh you know, the draft letter suggests considering doing a a low-impact development design for the railway store water management or the conventional design with much of cash basis. You know, like like the planning board to consider that. There's a vertical pool that uh it's it's hard to, you can't know for sure right now, but the the access road may encroach on the vertical pool resource area.
That don't on the right, so you're going.
Yeah.
Yes, uh which is um, that would be preventable crossing like that. But uh for example, we would really want, you know, uh that crossing to be as environmentally friendly as possible, no catch basins. Maybe it's not quite as wide. When I look at the surrounding landscape, uh I think most of the wood frogs probably uh would be migrating over that road to undeveloped habitat. That compose. So uh we would like to be conscious. Um, so that's that that's maybe one of the biggest comments in order. The other one and um is that uh I know this is very preliminary, but um this lot even with the solar farm could provide a really nice uh access to the West River and to the Henderson uh family conservation area. Uh, we envision vision potentially a loop trail that would um uh go uh through the uh the northern part of this parcel into ten percent. Come around come around down through the Corvus nearest land. And then uh then go along the southern boundary of the uh of the parcel. Uh, it wouldn't have to go through the potential solar field. It would be uh, you talked about having gated access at that road. I mean, that would be great, but maybe gated with a enough room for someone to walk through and have this nice loop trail. The um this part of Upton is kind of unserved when it comes to um public trails. Uh, it's really just that that Gospom Trail and then the the trail on the uh the West River, but in terms of loop trails, they're not well developed. So anyway, that that's our main concern. Michael or Grace, I mean, uh, could you pull up the uh again and show how?
Oh, yeah, give me a minute here. Oh, and uh Sean and Rick, I just emailed you those uh comments from Mike.
Uh, in a few of them, they need to change too, because they were made based on the original plan. And and I I saw some of the changes, uh you know, that that the may would actually um result in some of those comments being
One uh one question I'd like to post to the board um based on one of Mr. Panko's question or comments. Would, so right now, we have a twenty-six-foot-wide roadway through this whole thing per the 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 bylaws. Would the board be amenable to a narrower road at the crossing, say twenty-two feet or twenty feet?
This member would be amenable to a twenty-two-foot road. If if the fire department signs off on it, I don't see a reason for a twenty-six-foot road in that site.
And if you if you never want a bus or a truck down there, I'd agree with twenty-two, but if you don't, I'd say twenty-four with the lowest dot go.
Thank you.
And that's unusual. You didn't
I I won't, I won't tell anybody.
I do have a question on uh twenty-three and a half.
You you've asked for a waiver on the open space. Every subdivision is required to set aside ten percent of its land for open space for parks or playgrounds for the residents of the subdivision.
Yeah.
Uh, here, this the it may be uh reasonable to uh to do something different rather than set it aside in your in your subdivision, um work with conservation to try and figure out a better use for the open space.
And and it looks to me like uh Mike has just brought up the plan for a trail system down there that might yeah, address that issue.
Yes, I could um speak a little bit about that. Uh, this um the shaded areas are all protected open space of one kind or another. Uh, the blue is Army Corps of Engineers, uh, feeling they actually own it. And then you can see the Henderson family conservation, which has cost on it. The pink line is existing trail. There's uh the streets are playable, but there's uh there's a trail that leads into Henderson from Green Lane. And then it connects up to a uh trail that goes along the Army Corps of Engineers boundary uh to the south. Um, and the dotted uh pink line is what what, you know, potentially could be trail easement. You can see if you had the dotted pink line and the pink line put them together, you'd have a nice loop for the neighborhood and so and so up them. And uh you know, it's strong in a way that, you know, it wouldn't interfere with development of the site for a sort of.
You feel that's something we can pursue further conversation with the Conservation Commission on?
Uh, definitely. I I I see what he's trying to do here, and, you know, very, of course, I'm very familiar with this this area. He's he's creating a second point of access. You know, if you you have the Green Lane entrance there or access point. Um, I know that Green Lane people aren't very happy with people parking along their streets and getting out and walking in the trails. Now, what we're gonna do is what he's proposing is for us to do that at, you know, at an area that we create uh at in the subdivision. Um, but I am definitely willing to sit down and talk to them. No, no problem at all.
Any other comments from the planning board? Um, yes, Jimmy?
Thank you, Catherine, Madam Chairwoman. Um, to the applicants, this is from a monetary standpoint of generating taxation taxes. How much revenue would the town of Upton gain from the solar farm being built, number one?
We don't talk money here. There's no way to, yeah.
Then I will start my comments, other than the fact that I think conventional subdivision will be the best interest of the town of Upton.
Do I, um, is there any appetite to um? Was it premature to move forward with a approval of preliminary site plan pending, you know, conversations with the Conservation Commission and
We've just got all these changes to be fun.
According to, I think, the rules, we don't even, we we can get it from the, we don't even have to say anything, but we probably should um not be too specific about it, but uh is that true that we don't, we should probably do something, but uh
If the is is as far as ending the process, yeah.
That no waivers have been granted, but we encourage them to go forward into the definitive stage.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, uh, you you can um the this the statute is that um where you did, um, if you were to disapprove of the preliminary uh subdivision, you have to detail why. Um, I think it's fair to um you know, approving it also doesn't bear any sort of legal ramification that carries you into definitive.
Most important thing if I'm interrupting is it cuts it from a hundred and twenty down to ninety days.
Yeah.
So after, with with the definitive submission, you lose those thirty days or whatever it is from the process.
So the my question, I guess, is do we want DGGT DGGT to look at the at the modifications people close this?
But there weren't substantial modifications. I mean,
The 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 access road, I'd say, is a substantial modification. Um there's, uh, I mean, you're you're pretty much at the end of the line of pro of the preliminary process anyway, uh with the 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 time limitations. Uh, so I mean, if if that's, if it's the desire of the board to really hammer that out now in this process, I suggest you ask the applicant um if they're okay extending uh to to continue to allow for DGGT to review that access road.
But I guess they, you know, they've seen DGGT's first review as though, you know, they feel comfortable that
Yeah.
Still we still need to get feedback from the fire department.
Yeah, and and if the access road is is the main main concern, then it would be, you'll have to either gate it when you're not in use, or when it is in use, there'll have to be a yield, so that that will have to yield to the main road. So they have to be traffic assigned and and some, so that would be, if if you're not gonna go at the end of the cul-de-sac, you'd need to uh uh form a way to get in there to save and then
I I I would say, if you wanted to, I don't know how you typically make your motions preliminary, preliminary, but if you wanted to um suggest in in a motion that the applicant proceeds to filing a definitive subdivision plan with like what you just stated, and any and all changes you might want to have a valid
Do I your motion? Second, second, okay. On any discussion? See, all those in favor, Tommy? Ken?
Hi.
Margaret, hi, Kathy, oh, Paul.
Hi.
Kathy is an I, so it's unanimous.
Those motions proceed to filing a definitive subdivision and with consideration of all the comments provided uh by the board um today for consideration for for resigns essentially. Um, should should you choose to redesign uh with those comments?
And and I would encourage you to to also think about the comments from Concom in terms of of uh low-impact design on the route.
Yeah, and in the meantime, and Sean through the chair, I can, you know, I send things along to the fire department. I can coordinate meetings with building commissioner, fire department, police department, you know, board of maybe a board of health representative, you know, just to move things along or or get you in a better position before filing um definitive uh or not. We can handle it during definitive um, uh, it's up to you.
Yeah, no, I, Michael, I I think that's a uh a a great offer, and I think that would be valuable, um, you know, trying to get these things taken care of before an actual definitive filing, so that we try to streamline the process for for everybody's sake as much as possible. So, yeah, I appreciate that, and um, we can we can be in touch and try to set something up.
Yeah, and also as far as um Mike goes, Mike Panko, we we can um Sean and I can get on a meeting with you guys and uh, you know, discuss options. Definitely. Let me know when works.
Great. Uh, thanks very much.
So next item on the agenda.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Thank you. Is um the zoning articles, it said public hearing here, but we closed the public hearing, so it's a public meeting. So the public meeting was closed and public hearing was closed, so this is discussion amongst the board um about, I think we we did vote um on speak of the proposed articles. And there was one that we did not finish our conversations on and take a vote on, which was um the table of, you know, the uh amendments to section thirty dash ten dot one definition, you know, for the five key wild wireless data transfer facility. So I just wanted to, you know, there were a number of questions, and I just wanted to the board to, you know, hopefully wrap up deliberations tonight and vote with the recommend. So, board, um are there any questions or comments?
This looks very well done, by the way.
And we did get Laurie's comment.
I do have a question. Um, what is the difference, um, if any substantial difference between site plan approval and special?
One vote. Take four for a special.
But that's the only potential difference.
Well, there's a factor permit means that uh we we're allowed to use a little more
Discretion.
Discretion when it comes to neighborhood impact and things of that nature.
Yeah, sorry. Does anyone have any objections to having it by special permit rather than site plan?
Should be special. Anything to do with safety or 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 in that to be sure.
Does anyone have any further questions on what was proposed?
And that would be in um question four, okay, special.
Yeah, I'm I'm um I'll make the appropriate changes, and I believe um the changes were already added um in there uh that describes special permit instead of site plan. But with the with the the, should the board vote to recommend tonight? Um, you know, I'll obviously go back and make sure and sure all those changes been made, uh so there's no reference to site plan going forward. That's the main intent of the board.
Are there any other questions um or any other comments from members of the board?
I'll just suggest through the chair, I just wanted to make note that there was a small change that was made at the last meeting that's carried through into the language. I just want to uh make it clear for the record that that's included, and that was under G four. Uh, the 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 policies described in section two shall be intended to preserve the aesthetic character of the town, safeguard public safety, health and welfare. And then at the last meeting, you insert this language, protect the final interest. Health and welfare, and then at the last meeting, you insert this language, protect the final interests of the town, and then it continues on, so it's wanting to be exactly.
That was one of the things that was inadvertently admitted.
But that came out of discussion, yeah.
But Mike, was was that last? That last clause that you said, when I protect the final or financial interest of the town?
Oh, financial, yes, money.
Thank you.
So any other questions or comments? From the boys? Okay, um, then, yeah. Yes, I want.
I would move that we, um. Recommend as, uh. For the chair. To the Warren article that they recommend they can't approve. None of the Warren article has written.
With, uh, no, with changes of site plan to special permit, which is included, which is already.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so move.
Again.
Okay. Um, any further discussions? Okay, um, Tom? Ken?
Hi.
Margaret, hi. Paul?
No.
I'm gonna vote aye.
Sorry.
Quarter one.
Positive recommendation from planning board to town meeting.
Huh?
Positive recommendation from planning board to town meeting.
And let's see, the next thing, um. This is not a public hearing, right on his own lane, it's a public, it's a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, now is Haley Lane, uh, the acceptance as a public road.
Yeah.
That's positive hearing.
Oh, so this is tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's right, you said, okay. So I suspend the regularly scheduled meeting and, um, add. And of eight and, um, open a public hearing on the road acceptance down the lane. Um. So do you wanna give a quick? Introduction?
Oh, yes, um, and, uh, Bill Taylor is is going to be on, is here to, uh, assist with any, um, questions as well, uh, obviously, this this creates maybe, um. Uh. As as, uh, most of the members on the board are well aware, this is.
It's danger pool. It's danger. All over.
Danger tray, at least.
That, yes, the the third time holding this particular hearing. Um, there were complications, I believe, on the the first go around with just timelines and recording and getting signatures. Um, so it ultimately was not, so even though it was approved at town meeting, it was ultimately, um, uh, I guess considered not valid. Um, and then there was a second go around, I think in twenty twenty-two it was.
Under twenty days expired.
Yeah, exactly, and the same same thing with, um, the the last one. Um, and, uh, so the. Here again, um, the, uh, to to, nothing has changed, obviously, since the the last, uh, public hearings. Um. My my assumption is the the the, um. Peer review engineer at the time, uh, gave a. Positive recommendation or or reviewed, uh, the road as built to town standards, all those sorts of, uh, things of your custom hearing. Um, and so then presented the plan, and this board made a positive recommendation to accept as a public road. Um, so you, again, you have the same plans in front of you today. Um, the, uh, there was, um, issues, I I believe, uh, were arising because the, because it's not formally accepted as a town road as currently. Um. It was an issue, Bill, uh, helped me out, uh, that, uh, getting the appropriate drainage easements on to lots that.
There's four easements on two lots. And, uh, the easements were recorded well after the owners moved in, after the mortgages were recorded. Um, and rule is first, or your first, first in, first right, whatever, in any case. As a result, uh, if the mortgages were to go into default. Um. Because they were filed first, that would, uh. Uh, it, um. Basically dispense with the easements. And we would lose them. Now, in one case, the owner refinanced, so the second mortgage was filed af- after, recorded after the easement. So the easement has a first position. On the other property, uh, the mortgage, uh, is from the original mortgage filed before the easement. Um, and that is, and that has not been subordinated. Uh, so we've been seeking to have, uh, the bank subordinate the mortgage to the easement. And that, as of today, that no subordination had been recorded at the registry of deeds, and that's is, so that's. That's where we stand, and I believe when we went through this before, town council's recommendation was we get mortgages and now just the mortgage subordinated. Uh, before we go forward.
Yeah.
But the planning board's responsibility for the only town. Own property, that would be the the roadway. And any property that we own would be, um, that's what we'd be voting on, the town's gonna take. Well, this is low with the easements, I don't think the planning board would be recommending to the town in that process.
I think what Bill is saying is that we should hold off on taking the roadway until we can subordinate it, is that?
Well, we can't, we're not, we're not, the easements aren't related to our jaws.
Yeah. No, I understand, but I'm just saying, I think.
Well. I would, I would disagree, I mean, the easements are, they're drainage easements, right, so, I mean, we wouldn't be able to maintain the road if we can't maintain. Appropriate drainage, so the town could. But but let's say that, you know, nobody lets us on the, on the property and the road just keeps washing out over and over again. That that's a problem, that's part of the structure.
So we wouldn't approve a roadway if the drainage basin, uh, wasn't cleaned?
If we didn't, if, well, yeah, we do have, look at the catch basins, but we would, we wouldn't approve a road if we didn't have an easement.
Yeah, let's finish up with the board discussion first, that'll open it up for a public discussion. Um, you know, my concern with this basically, this is the third time we brought this to town meeting at least. And I I just. You know. I'm reluctant to do it until we know that this is gonna be the appropriate model. Um, and that this actually is going to. Um. That this is actually gonna happen this time.
Who's sponsoring the article, Alfonso?
But, uh, technically, um, uh, it's listed as the petitioner as Alfonso, but it was initiated, um, through, uh, the, uh, town council and town manager's office to to get this before the board again.
Yeah.
But but as it. So it's the selectman that's the sponsor of the article? Is that right? I mean, somebody has to be the champion, right?
Yeah, I'll confer with, um, Joe, how the article's written, um.
Because the first time, I think, that the applicant, the developer, just, you know, it's my understanding, I could be wrong, just didn't. Get all the paperwork in on time. And the second time, I don't know what the issue, why it wasn't. Why I didn't move forward and, you know, maybe. Um. Is anyone from Alfonso on the call?
Uh, I'm not sure, I don't know.
Well, here's the question, so, so the roadways complete, uh, the the sidewalks and everything's ready, finding coast down, I mean, it's finished coast down. But there's a. There's a drainage easement off of the roadway. That the town is going to maintain. And that's gonna be included in. The plan, is that true?
These, well, in my experience, the easements are always included in the plan, and they're included in the deed.
We're accepting a plan, the planning board is, the, we're getting shown a plan here, and you're saying that there's an easement somewhere here. That's not shown, or it is shown and it's not.
Is it the easement that shows back to the? This? With that?
There there are drain, that there are easements.
It's, are we showing an easement that they haven't?
Or is it?
That the homeowner isn't gonna let us have?
These, these are problems. There's. Right, the easement, G, um, and probably here, so these are these. We need to get on, the DPW would need to get onto the property to maintain these areas. And so in any case, so that's why we see, that's why we're seeking the easements. And generally speaking, the deeds that I've reviewed, the easements are included in the deed to the town.
Okay, so we're gonna. Approve this, we're gonna recommend to the town that this plan is meets the town.
I think what 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 Phil is saying.
What I'm saying.
If we, if we don't approve the road, that puts pressure on getting these easements filed, uh, subordinated to the mortgage. So that we have the town's protected future.
Are we at odds between what's gonna help the homeowners and what's gonna help the town?
That is, I believe, where we're at, yes.
Is the easement, is this, okay, so. Whose land are these easements on? Is it on a property?
Yeah, yeah, so it's here.
Okay, so these are part of theirs, okay.
Yeah.
And it's included.
Those are drainage.
Yeah, they're drainage.
And is the, is it included in there, are those easements part of the deeds they have?
No, so the easements were created after the homes were sold.
Okay.
Um, and I believe everybody signed the easement agreement, however. From a mortgage perspective. The mortgage holder, one of the mortgage holders, and that's the only thing the question now is, one of the mortgage holders has not supported any of the mortgage to the easement.
Because that's gonna devalue his property.
Well, I have no idea why they have.
He would assume that any encumbrance on his property would be valued.
And the.
The the coordination time has to come from the lender. So, so in Massachusetts, you know, you don't. If if you've granted a mortgage on your property, the the mortgage is, it's a, it's a deed. So you you're granting, you're you're deed in the property to the bank, subject to your right to get it back when you pay off the mortgage. So that's, you know, the 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 superior interest in the land is the mortgage holder. And we would normally have the developer or whoever owns that land, give the, give the town an easement. The problem is they don't have the right to do it, they're they're junior to the mortgage interest, so. Normally, you go to the bank and say, hey, bank, give us an easement, and you you get it, I don't know if anyone's asked the bank for an easement, I don't know if the town, the town has or Alfonso has. But we need it to have the right to go onto that land to maintain. The, to maintain the drainage which maintains the road. And I'm I'm a little concerned too, because in the materials, you know, like, we've got a deed. From Alfonso, that that's, you know, we would be. We have to accept the road, meaning accept the deed, because we take a fee interest on this one. But it's not signed, so I don't know if Alfonso is gonna sign a deed, so. We need them to be part of this for the town to have an accepted road.
Is there anyone from Alfonso on the call?
Yeah, hi, this is Jim Sullivan, um, from Gary, Aaron, Hellman, representing Alfonso, how are you? Um, there is one more subordination agreement, uh, that is to be signed. It is not signed yet. It was our understanding, we were gonna continue the process that your, is before you tonight. And that agreement would be taken care of. The homeowner was reluctant, uh. To work with the, uh, builder on the easement, and that has changed, so the homeowner is in agreement and, uh, there's a lender. That the attorney is working with to get that secured. That would, so it's the the four easements that I think you were pointing at. The deed, uh. Is gonna, is updated to reflect the four easements. So once those are all, uh, subordinated, I think, as it's called. That would be in place well in advance of the, uh, town meeting. So I don't know if the select board initiated it, or if Alfonso's attorney initiated it, but I know there's been dialogue. With folks in town to, uh, to get this moved along for the meeting coming up.
Question of, what would be the, uh? Problem for the board if we were to recommend town approval subject to those details being worked out?
That's the DPW's circuit.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
So Jim, you're pretty optimistic that'll be worked out before town meeting?
Yes, I spoke to the attorney and, uh, she is very optimistic that it'll be worked out, it it was, uh, challenging before and it doesn't seem like it is any longer.
And is there, oh, just one more question for Jim, is there any other potential glitch? Um, you know, again, this has gone before town meeting already twice.
I hope not, no, there's, there's. There is none that I'm aware of or that we are aware of, no, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Familiar with the term move over, hatched over?
Yeah, so, um.
Do that.
Yeah, we have another hand up, um, does anybody have any more questions for Jim? Okay, uh, Matthew?
Uh, yes, um, Matthew Gates, I live on Azalea Lane, um, first, I'm really hearing about this, I just got the letter in the mail. Um, I just, I couldn't see what you were looking at on the table for the drainage easements, I just want to verify that they're not on my property. Um, if they are, it would be the first time I heard about it, would like, oh, more, I'm, I'm sure you would have been approached if it wasn't your property, but let me, let us verify for you.
His property, if these are the.
I can speak to that, it's not on his property.
Okay, it's not on your property.
Sounds good, thank you.
Now, we take, uh, fifty, these twenty-six foot wide roads are in the middle of a fifty foot right. Are these easements outside fifty foot right away, do you know? Because if they're not, there's no issue, they're inside, what the towns say.
Yeah, so, um. Given all the energy that's been expended on this, I'm sure they're outside of right.
Makes it easy. We need the homeowner to.
Of gravity.
Are there any other questions from anyone, um? That's calling in? Okay, um. Tommy, did you come up with a motion?
Uh, I would move that the planning board recommend approval of Azalea Lane, subject to. Want to fill in the subject to? Uh, subject to the easements being approved by town council, town manager. I don't know who would be the approval.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, acceptable town council and DPW town.
Okay. So you got that, Paul?
So subject to securing. And documenting. The easements. And, and.
Approval by the county council.
A deed. Acceptable. To. The select board. And town council.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, any other calls?
And now the board's in the middle of, um, taking a vote, uh, Matt.
I think Matt didn't put his hand down.
Okay.
Matt, you just didn't put your hand down, right?
Sorry, I tried to do it, I couldn't, uh.
Yeah, for some reason it had two hands up before.
Surrender.
Okay, so so moved and seconded, who seconded?
Second.
Okay. So any further board discussion? Okay, all was in favor, Tommy?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Kathy is an I, so it's unanimous. So I. I'm drawing a blank on the words, so I, um. The public hearing.
Oh, you go back, it was the public, the public hearing, it's a good word, it's a good word.
And reopen, I I had reopen, reopen the, um, the regularly scheduled meeting. So, um, playing board discussion or action items, um. Let's see, described in Chestnut Street, L O F R, special permit, Jean Burnat. Um, and Jean, thank you for not, for delaying this from me. Um, he was on the agenda for last meeting, we had the heavy agenda, I. Had my dad be the first to pop stuff. Uh, like, do you want to start and then turn it over to me, or do you just want?
Oh, no, I'll turn over the gene, um, and I'll just, um, you'd email, we have the plans you want to show.
Yeah, I think.
I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself from this one, but I will take the notes.
Give me a minute to be on the screen here. What else? That's, yeah, oh, I'm, I'm putting it up here. Second.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you have to use the ones that come on the.
That's. You got. It's the same.
So what are we looking at?
So we're looking at sixty-four acres of, uh, property that's off of Chestnut Street and. Upton.
about the, that we've owned since nineteen ninety-three, I believe. Um, it was an approved subdivision called Forest Hills that went bankrupt. There are two access points that are the original road layout for the Forest Hills, the improved Forest Hills subdivision. One is at the south side of the parcel. Um, as you go down, down Chestnut Street, and one is at the north side of. Um, in the purchase that we did, the reason we purchased the property originally was to prevent it from being developed as twenty-six lot subdivision. Um, we put the property, working with Metacomet Land Trust, under a permanent conservation restriction, with the exception of two building zones that were to be held for family to build on. And two building zones are shown on this, this particular plan. And they were intended to be accessed through the, uh, road layout for the approved subdivision. I think, like, we're going to go to some of the other plans chose better. So on the, this is the southern entrance of the approved layout of the roadway. It's, um, conforms to whatever the regulations says of the time of the approval of the subdivision work.
There's no road there now, right?
No, there's no, there's a, we built an access driveway in, into that side. And we have an access road that was built into the north parcel.
And the frontage for that, those lots are off of?
Here.
All off Chestnut Street.
And these two lots that you're, uh.
Those lots are all, those were all sold. The ones on the frontage, those are sold by the, the original subdivision owners. What we're talking about doing, what we'd like to have the board consider, which wasn't an option at the time when we did this purchase, was to, um, allow through the large lot division process, access to the, the two lots, the two building zones, rather. And to allow the subdivision of two large lots, uh, exceeding ten acres and well over ten acres in size, uh, to allow us to transfer one of these building zones to one of my children.
Still have frontage on, but they'd have reduced frontage on.
On Chestnut, Chestnut. And the frontage would be the, the road access.
Those building zones on this?
Yeah, so this is one of the building zones are here. There we go. Yeah, it's, that's a lot. Right there. So there's the building zones shown.
They're going to be far enough to leave the kids.
They're actually out there, they're watching, so I can't say anything. But we don't have them with us and have loved having them with us throughout their lives. I know, we really do love having them with us.
Don't put him on the. I have my daughter living, but we do not put him on the. Little feet upstairs.
Exactly. Um, and, and so they, they're at a point now in their lives where they think they can undertake this. And so we, you know, we want to support them in it. Um, and we want to have the board consider whether the, the large lot subdivision, uh, would work for this particular option. As I said, originally what we had talked about doing was using like the approved subdivision, just getting rid of all lots and just using the approved roadless.
And that's the reason for the large lot frontage, just so that you don't have to do that. And we don't have a road that we have to maintain and fortunately we got a.
Yeah, I think.
It's not conducive to the town to have five hundred foot roads with warehouses and.
Uncaped too, and the whole, the whole purpose behind this purchase and the whole purpose behind the entity, Strong Valley, uh, LLC was to preserve the property and maintain it in its open state.
It was just, it's a driveway, not a roadway.
And this is a driveway, not a roadway. So it's, it, you know, it will be what's necessary to access the home. And the, you know, the each, each access will be individual, so it's no shared, there's no shared driveway either. Or just like I said, using the existing road layouts that were improved.
So each would access their one?
One, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, what's, what's on this side?
State for, that was, you know, the driver behind this. At the time, I was chairman of the, of the open space committee. Um, and, uh, it, it was just a, it was incredibly, it still is an incredibly great property with a point of view of open space in town. Wildlife that is, I would say earlier, that little corridor he had down to West River Day, and this is a part of the open space border. So we have otters and beavers, everything that you can imagine comes through there. So we would have, and you know, if this is something the board would consider, we would, you know, mean instruction as to what, you know, what would be the actual steps that are necessary to do the large lot subdivision. Um, I know it's not like an A and R. I assume it's not like an A and R. Um, but it's something similar. So what, what would the, the intent would be to draw a lot to, uh, the, the smallest of the lots would still exceed the minimum requirement for, to maintain a chapter sixty-one.
Well, it was our effort back in those days that if you're going to have less than a two hundred and forty foot of frontage to make your house, your neighbors are gonna, you, you might devalue your neighbor's house that has a two forty and it's just gonna look. So what we came up with, if you've got three times the, the land and X, and, and this is a dimensional, if you're looking, you can just take what the dimensions are and what the design standards are. But it was, it was better to do it that way, to put up one house on six acres or ten acres than to put up three houses on ten acres. Just because, so this is, this was our way to not exceed our ability just for the schools and.
This is, this is exactly what it was designed for, unlike any of the ones that we see that come in.
And somebody has a house and they want to put their kids next door. You know, they, they have a way to do it. They have plenty of land outside, but it's, they used up most of the frontage with the original house. So it's still seventy feet left over on your land.
So we, what, what we've done, and the other reason why the, the house, where the building zones were chosen, was we had the original plans for the subdivision. We knew that those two areas would perk and that were, you know, they were in, out of, uh, what the resource areas. Both are completely out of, or they were before the beavers became very. Completely out of resource areas. Um, with the, the southern parcel is within the buffer zone.
That's waterfront property now.
Maybe, actually, we do have waterfront property on both sides.
So what is the, what is the frontage that you have on these?
Uh, whatever was required for the road layout, because the road layout had the R E D I.
Okay.
On each side of the road, so it's a fifty foot right away.
Thirty foot on each side.
And thirty, plus the thirty feet inside in the south, and the circle, the southern one is slightly wider than that. I think it's just.
It's just around, you're just looking for the problem, so you can see.
Same one driveway that did something.
Finding.
There's seventy feet. Okay, that was my question, because I thought it was.
So you can, you can actually, then one of the next, um, next one actually shows the road layout on the plans, that, so it shows how many feet. So if you look at that road, that road layout on the southern parcel right there, that shows where that road layout ends is approximately where that home, that building zone begins. So it's six hundred feet back, at least six hundred feet back. And the parcel size would probably be, you know, twelve to fifteen acres. With that, you know, for that lot. In the north parcel, as a similar, similar thing, the road layout is placed. There were existing drainage easements, grading easements, that's what's in the outline of those lots in the Forest Hill subdivision. I think those were recorded. But kind of getting back, what I was talking about, were recorded with the deeds at the time the lots were sold.
It's going to be treated as a, as an eighty-one P, once it's approved, it's not a subdivision. It's going to be eighty-one P, so it's going to be the building permit.
Yeah.
Conservation, water health, all of them.
Okay.
The usual characters.
So what are, what's this next step?
Oh, large lot frontage.
Lot frontage, like, uh, with the, uh.
Jimmy, I'll call when we're done.
But just, yeah, just in the.
Okay, I haven't seen it yet, so I, this is new, so.
We gotta.
So this is like a concept?
Yeah, the, it's not a. The, um, the, obviously, the, the intent of the discussion tonight was just to verify with the board that this would fit within the parameters of large lot, uh, given it's, it's definitely different from what the ones that I've seen, um, come in, so.
Yeah, because this one actually respects the intent of the large.
Oh, and so, sure. So, and, uh, so, but, um, so Jean, what, uh, I think, well, the very next step is maybe talking with, I don't know if it's land planning or someone else, and, um, creating that, um, that plan, uh, that will need to be evaluated through the, the special permit process. That plan obviously will then become your eighty-one P A and R plan that, once you secure the special permit, you can get that endorsed by the planning board and then file.
Probably, I think the next step for us probably is to talk with Alan Engineering. I was studying the subject, you know, the subject plan for my son, um, and just try and come up with some boundaries that make sense.
And one of the things that usually we look at is a, is a paper plan for the sub to prove that you could put a subdivision in there.
It's, it's, it's in the planning reports filed someplace. I was looking for it, trying to get it into the registry of deeds to give to you guys, and the subject is the twenty-six, it was twenty-six lots.
And the definition of a subdivision is two or more lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you only have to show that you could put two.
Since they've shown twenty-six that on.
And that saves a roadway and a lot of damage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we were, at the time, we were off. We've written every public hearing. It would just, the building boom died and that's, you know.
It was ninety-three you were on the open space?
Well, I found that the, I found that the open space.
You own the chainsaw?
What's that?
You own the chainsaw?
I still own chainsaw.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any more questions than Julie Kennesy? Okay, Mr. Bates?
So, through the, Madam Chairman, to Jean. But these two lots, and I commend you for your intent. And speaking on, I'll be supporting.
Yes.
But there are no, there is no legal road frontage to either one of these lots.
Correct. The road frontage is, is the actual
non-ever-built approved subdivision.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, we have, we had this conversation way back when, what actually, of all the people that are here, only Tom was in that meeting. And we, what we talked about was, well, I could put in a cul-de-sac and end it at six hundred feet and pave it. You know, the whole way, because that was, uh, you know, one way to get, to use. And get the, and to get the, the, the frontage. But that's toe counter to the whole idea of conservation, everything, you know, that, that might pave.
So again, if I could, through the chair to Jean. You ha, you have a, you have access off of, um, Chestnut Street. And how, how much road frontage do you have?
Between the two parcels, I've been, and so it's fifty plus thirty plus, uh, it must be ninety on each, each one.
Yeah, so it's trying, which is.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's seventy percent of the legal road frontage for the second. You really, if you read that bylaw, you have to have legal road.
But there is for each of the lots, they're just in two different locations.
And that's just the important thing, if I make, if we're going to treat each one independent.
Right, right.
Right, so each one has to have seventy feet, each one has to have three times of that, so each one is going to be treated as its, as its own public hearing.
Right.
So, so Jean, through the chair, do you have two points of legal access?
Yes.
Silent motion.
Yeah, and so, like I said, it was the.
It's in and out.
It was the, yeah, after the negress, yeah, for the twenty-six lots, there was, there was, the twenty-six lots subdivision had two cul-de-sacs and two entrances. You know, it had entrances and a need.
Yeah. So it kind of sounds like it might be okay.
No, I'm sure that, you know, just, you know what to do and.
Well, your engineer's going to read the bylaw.
Yeah.
And then submit the bylaw or ask us the way we.
Yeah, has Alan done a couple of these?
Yeah.
He's also the lowest barrier.
So I like you, you know.
So, okay.
I like Mark.
Okay. So can, I mean, Mike is also wealth of information and he has just so much time.
Asco.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing is, um, discussion Mayflower dry road acceptance. Um, we have anything new on that or is it?
Not really. I'm still, I, I need to get the report from D G T as to what is outstanding and what the cost is. Um, and once I have that, I'll be engaging the, um, developer again to ask. Uh, basically, hey, this is what are the estimated costs of approvals are? Um, this is what you have in a bond right now?
Yeah.
What if we just use that bond right now to make the improvements?
Yeah. And you've been working with council as well?
Yeah, yeah. So, but that's it, that's where I am with it. So I'm just waiting on D G T right now.
Okay. Okay, um, there's nothing else on the agenda that I can see unless this topic, not reasonably anticipated.
Oh, did I discuss? Oh, I thought we had the, um, recommendations on the, on the agenda, um, but it's not, um, I, but I, I did circulate, um, it's not on the agenda, so you don't have to take any action on it, uh, but I'll just, if, if through the chair, if it's okay if I just.
You can continue on your planner's report.
Yeah, I'll pick up at the end of my planner. Um, the, uh, had conversation with, uh, the select board about specifically the solar, um, overlay district, and they had some concerns, um, relative to what this board had already discussed, you know? Um, we started this process over a year ago, I think it was, and, and, uh, you know, obviously initially the town, a town meeting rejected an overall overhaul of the solar, um, and so, uh, this board, um, then went back to the drawing board, um, as to, uh, how they even proceeded with that, and, um, it was, it, the boards, uh, preference, but everybody liked the idea of allowing for solar on a property such as a sandpit gravel pit, some, some sort of use that's been long established that has had, uh, um, impact to the land, you know, that include, that, uh, includes land clearing that already exists, because there's definitely no appetite in town, doesn't seem for doing large cutting, uh, deforestation in the name of, of, of solar energy, which is.
Which frequently disturbs soil.
Yeah.
Area.
Um, so what I did is just, I took the conversation, so, uh, the, the select board had concerns about specifically spot zoning because of the, uh, the, the placement of the district on one parcel. Um, and again, again, obviously this board had gone through that conversation, uh, at the outset with, with me, um, and, and describing what, what spot zoning is and sort of the sniff test for that. Um, town council, in, in my conversation with town council, she reassured me that she's confident that there'd be no, uh, issues regarding spot zoning so long as the proposed zoning overlay district, uh, achieved a, a, a legitimate planning purpose. And so in my memo on behalf of the planning board, um, I detailed what those legitimate planning purposes were. Uh, it was the fact that it's not just a small parcel land, it's a eighty-plus acre piece of land. Um, because, uh, the, the land that's selected is existing, uh, improved, cleared, you know, former site of a sandpit. So as, as to encourage solar development to go on sites like that and not, and, and discourage it away from deforestation and then things of that nature. Um, uh, you know, state solar goals, yeah, et cetera.
The visual impact.
Visual, yes, visual impact, even remote area, uh, the remoteness of this particular.
Flood, the flood, uh, flood easement.
The, the flood easements, all of that was mentioned within, uh, the memo. Obviously, I took that from all the conversation that the board had been having.
But that should not offset spot zoning, which allows people in one end of town to do something that somebody other in the town can't.
Well, she interpreted, there's an interpretation that she gave.
The reason I think that we can't allow the spot zoning on this is it's not impacting, uh, density. It's not, it's not, um, we're not allowing, uh, of this type of a building here with this kind of presence and this.
Yeah.
As opposed to someone who was saying, no, you can't do that. So it's a business use, it's pre, it's previously disturbed area, and it's revenue. That, that doesn't impact.
We don't talk about money.
And I think I also, and I think I also, um, mentioned pretty much all, I touched on all of those points as well in the memo, so.
But the other thing she touched upon was according to zoning, it's, um, if it's. you know, supports a legitimate, legitimate public use.
We probably should say we should press a highest and best use because what planning board's supposed to do when we recommend to somebody, like a selectman, if the town's supposed to take over, we're supposed to recommend the highest and best use for.
Yeah.
So spot zoning this there is probably the highest and best use.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's, that was. And the other issue that was raised at that meeting was that selectmen questioned the ability to put a sandpit there. To put a solar there because in the past, you know, subdivision had been ruled out because of the wetlands because the Army Corps and the athletic fields wasn't appropriate for athletic field for the same reason. So, you know, that's something that we need to establish too, is that this is that, and I remember the plans, I didn't have the details in that at the selectmen's meeting, but you can put a solar button there.
Well, in part because the, well, the army, he'll have to get an Army Corps permit.
Yes.
But the Army Corps. Because you're not actually displacing very much water storage. And you still have to write, build some compensatory storage. It's not like he's.
And everything has to be, all utilities have to be floodproof below a certain obfuscation.
Yeah. So.
So, I mean, that was just basically, I just wanted to make sure the planning board was aware of those comments going in in the, in the recommendation, because I felt it was, it was warranted to just kind of include those specific findings based on the discussion that we had through the public hearings and before then. And the, and the other recommendations are literally just your motion plus the. Plus the language.
And there were no comments on the other.
No. That was it. You know, obviously, don't, don't take any action on it. It's unnecessary. Just FYI.
Do I hear a motion, teacher?
Oh, yeah, and anybody that's good.
You don't get a public comment period. Well, okay, public comment period. Anybody?
Anything other than on the agenda.
Can I just say thank you to you folks for all the work and all the support and we've given this dialogue together and we've been working on for a long time.
I give you thanks for it.
Fantastic job.
Thank you.
It's a lot of give and take and we appreciate that. Thanks for getting us to, yeah. Okay, any other, they come knocking, we'll do any. Any other issues that haven't been anticipated by the chair? Yes, Jim.
I have a totally different point, but not exactly what she's talking about. It's the planning board in the town of Upton done anything, got to the affordable housing regulation put on by the governor in regard to MBTA.
Yes, there's been a lot done. There is a, we, I mean, Mike can answer that better than me. But yes, there has been a lot, and there's Affordable Housing Trust in Upton that's also working to look at the development of.
William Street.
Through the chants of the board. It's a lot of bother, but enough. How I read it is a zone within a half mile from the facility. So you have to look into this.
What? Half mile from what? We have looked into it, Jim. We have looked into it. And we know it has to be, Upton is a small, adjacent, adjacent, small, yeah, rural adjacent.
Rural, yeah.
Which means that the requirement, so we're rural, we're one town away. And so, you know, filed, yes, 10 acres. There is a plan. You know, that we're looking at in a place that will minimize disruption to the town. It's something we submitted our preliminary plan to the state, which has allowed us to stay into compliance until now. And we're working with a consultant to have something prepared to go to fall town meeting. So we are very, very much on top of it. We have looked at all the details. And between this board and the Affordable Housing Trust, we do know what we're talking about.
Okay, and so then maybe you should be able to answer this question. We're not obligated to have a zone in place until the end of 2025.
That's correct.
Okay, good. But going back to my question about distance.
I don't know what you meant by facility. You said within a half mile of the facility.
The train stop.
The train stop.
No, it's not a half mile. It's an adjacent community.
For, through the chair.
There's something in.
Yeah, yeah. So for, so for Lake Grafton, Westboro, any other community that actually has a T stop, their requirement is exactly half mile from that. Or the rules are different for, what the chair was saying, Upton has defined a small town rural adjacent. A jumble of words is to describe it. And which, in which case the requirement for a town like Upton, it's not that it needs to be a half mile from a train station, because obviously that doesn't exist in town. The town needs to zone 10 acres of its choice essentially by going through the process of identifying where you would like to have that district. 10 acres. And it needs to sustain up to, or sorry, not up to, a minimum of 150 units within that acre district. That's, and that's the requirement.
Or someone.
Okay, any other comments? Anyone? You just come to these meetings because you love us?
No, I was going to ask the question that you answered before I asked.
Oh, okay.
About the difference between the. Yeah, I was kind of lost.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, and I, you don't need to vote, I can vote to lose. It's your duty.